We'd like to welcome everybody to our Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Start with public comments, do we have any?
Not registered.
Great, thank you. I'll move us on to items to be placed on our regular City Commission Agenda, which is our minutes from our February thirteenth study session and our February fifteenth regular meeting. Commissioners, did you have a chance to read those over? If so, do you have any suggestions or changes? We okay with moving that on to the agenda?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. That'll move us on to items for presentation and discussion. The first one is our review of our monthly reports for January. We'll start with Commissioner Graves.
Just have one kind of question on package page fifty-four. It says the sidewalk replacement on Tremont Willow is mostly complete, but our crew will be coming behind the contractor to finish up the project. And I had specifically had messaged some concerns to Dennis before we passed along some citizen that live in that area. Who didn't have access to their driveways or something, so I was hoping if you could give us an update on what that will look like.
Sure, I think, I think at this point, I don't think, I know. Some of the approaches, the driveway approaches had not been finished. And the contractor, we were having some problems getting the contractor to finish. And so our crews went and finished specifically on Willow. So at this point in time, Willow is basically done except for seeding and that kind of thing, which will happen here in the. As we get some weather board, there was one issue on Tremont. That still we're working to resolve, had a water leak that had been leaking for some time on the the property owner's side. And so to put sidewalk in there certainly made no sense whatsoever until we get that dried up, but once that gets dried up. The contractor that had that particular. Piece has assured us that, you know, he will get in there and finish that one up, but otherwise. I'm not going to say everything went really smooth, but for our first attempt. I think it went okay and we will be headed to do some more. We've started that process.
Thank you very much. And that's all I had for today.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
I wish that Dennis wouldn't have left. My only question is for Dennis so far and I have to go back to find it. Will you tell us about the the fitness court? Give us an update on fitness court, please?
The fitness court is a court that is designed and we will be making a presentation about that. Relatively soon here. We are still. There was a match, look loss and blue shield. Provided about sixty thousand dollars worth of funds on about a hundred and forty thousand dollar project. We are working at this point in time. On grants. Other grants, other interested parties, whoever that might be to. Possibly do donations or be a part of the fitness court. The fitness court itself. How do I explain that? Basically, it's it's an an outdoor workout area. It has a number of of amenities that that allow people to to sit outside or be outside and then do their workouts. We at this point in time still are looking for some money, I I think is what I would say. We do have the ability not to put the fitness court in. And so we're just going to, you know, wait and see how the how the funds come come around at this point.
Although we already have the court.
We have the court here.
So we've already paid the bill.
We have not paid the bill completely. We have not paid the bill completely. We still are thirty thousand dollars short of paying the bill completely. They will give us all of our money back. Except for what it costs us to ship the court back to them at this point in time. So we, there again, we have not, the fitness court has not been put in. But we are still making that determination.
And do we have a location yet?
Yes, actually, we are thinking that Kansas Park. Up on the, what would be the southwest corner, kind of at the entrance there.
Okay.
Is where we're looking to put the fitness court.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it.
You can stay if she doesn't have anything else. I just have a question on the, with the KDOT not allowing us to do barricades for the Prairie Spirit Trail. So they're not allowing us to do anything solid along there, just basically those reflectors.
We, yeah, we had asked to do like the lane barriers that you see along the highway. Along where the Prairie Spirit Trail goes underneath I thirty-five. I got a letter from KDOT here a couple of weeks ago, week ago, whatever it was, that. Said that the only thing that we could do is the. Stanions that that were there that have all been knocked down by by traffic. And that KDOT, after they put them up, was no longer going to be responsible for them. They would not allow us to put anything more substantial. And I've asked the question and still do not have an answer and maybe will not get an answer, but quite honestly, that made no sense to me, so I asked why. And I have not, I have not received a response to to why, you know, we could not do that. Especially if we're the ones responsible for them.
Yeah. And I was, I don't know, do you know if there's any appeal process? I just. To me, thinking about the fact that they're getting hit is proving a fact that things are hitting them, which improves a safety risk.
And somebody's, you know, somebody's over in that land, you know, and they could just as easily hit a biker as they could hit that standion or walker, whoever it is. And that was our concern, you know, actually the mayor and and the city manager and I were out there looking at that. It's been a while back. And I've been trying to get an answer for a while, you know, it's to to what we could do there. But at this point in time, that's the answer I have, you know, I I do not know that there's an appeal process. So, you know, usually KDOT, once they make a determination, it is what it is. But I would still like to know why. You know, I I almost kind of think they owe us that, but there again, we're talking about a state agency that may even not feel like they owe us anything. I think I don't know the answer to that either, but. But yeah, that's kind of where we're at. In fact, the guys have been out looking to. To at very least replace what was there and and so we will be in the process of doing that and. If we come up with a way to do something different. We thought we had a good idea, you know, but KDOT didn't think it was such a good idea, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
I think we're done here now, if I'm done.
Okay.
Another thing I had was, I'm going to steal from Commissioner or Mayor Proctor Skidmore does, on page fifteen. I like seeing that the, you know, the total earnings and maturity on our investments is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in. An interest, which I think so. Great service to the community, kind of being good stewards with their money. By not letting it just an item and actually make some money in the end. Then on page forty-one, Chief Weingardner. He was just going to ask, I saw two officers left, and did you know? Were those personal reasons, compensation packages? The one that went to Johnson County and then Cass.
The one for Johnson County, definitely compensation, the one in Cass County with Stanley.
And then on page forty-three as well on that. Wasn't sure if you had anything on the the theft, I saw theft was up. Fifty percent basically over kind of last year. And I think I saw on the breakdown, was that mainly shoplifting? That was all shoplifting, okay. I think that was all.
Your first one, Skidmore?
Sure, page, all the pages of general fund, what is behind all these funds, I see that we have, like at the end of the. Summary, current balance, I guess, of month twenty, month twenty-three. Like the general fund shows, four billion and five hundred and fifty-one thousand, so general fund, as we, I guess. And how's that part of the nineteen million we have in our check unit?
Yes.
That's part of that nineteen, okay.
That's all part of a pool.
You're on the disbursement of the of the funds. And guessing Rebecca here.
She is not.
She's not, you know where we're at. Yeah, I had the same question about the two officers about, two wine gardeners, so that answers that question, I guess it's. It's a blessing that occurred to be close to Johnson County, I guess, on a wage, and so that's going to happen, I understand totally. I do appreciate though the promotions that were within our both departments, so it's always good to see promoted from within, so I appreciate that. Thank you, good job on that. And then Main Street, where are we at, Main Street?
Right here.
Okay, I know it's this one page ahead, Ottawa Main Street Association, says customer balance summary. Page eighty-eight, our packet, I didn't know what that was.
Your tracker is so word and quick look, so we're we're working through this, but this is the balance of our IWW loans.
Okay.
Um, we've been actively collecting on those and happy to report that everybody is paying some of them now, but. This was the balance of our IWW loans.
Something's, I see Richard Nice had a balance.
No, that's not, that's not Richard Nice, that's somebody else.
So whether, okay. And the bank, our bank didn't have any of that.
They were giving out bills for IWWs. So how do you expect people to pay the bills?
They did, they paid it back, I'm glad to see that, though. That's, that's a good program, it really is. And then last one, ninety-one, Vanessa, are you on?
She's in Australia, so I don't think she'll.
I am here.
There she is.
She sounds like she's from Australia.
The accent has gotten a lot thicker since I've got back here, my apologies.
Well, I just saw that you went to Pika and met the governor and and you had a position with regard in the state regarding to your. Your role, just tell a woman about that visit, how was the governor?
Yeah, no, it was great. We got invited as representatives of animal welfare in the state of Kansas. And the governor has prioritized animal welfare in a few areas, so that was just awesome to be there. And I didn't think I would ever get that opportunity and got to meet her, shake her hand, got to meet the lieutenant governor. It was just a, just a really cool opportunity, I'm so excited I got to go.
Good, well, good, we'll have a good time, throw a couple of shrimp on the barbie, have a good time.
Will do.
All right, and that's all I have.
How do you follow that? I I don't know. I just have one question, it's page twenty-seven, it kind of transitions from twenty-six to twenty-seven, it shows the permit fees that we've. Already taken in this month, or in January, and they're significantly higher this year than they were last year. And I just wanted to know if somebody could explain why, and there's the permit fees, it's not, I I would assume normally at the beginning of the year, you'd be licensed licensing fees, but it's not at this point. Do you know of something? Melanie or someone?
I don't actually know that for you, but I'll I'll look into it, I'll let you know.
Yeah, that'll be fine. That's all I have. Do any of the department heads want to come on up and tell us anything about what's going on with their department that they would like us to know?
I've got one thing for you.
Come on up, chief.
Not related necessarily, the two monthly reports, but. Just want to let you know that the Ottawa Police Foundation did host our eleventh annual trivia night this weekend at the Bottle House. And had twenty-one teams that registered to play and the event went off really good. And we did raise a little bit of money that the foundation will put back to support some of their additional programs. And we already got the save the date ready for twenty twenty-four, so if you're interested to play and you think you have some good trivia knowledge. We've got the place for you, so just want to let you know, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Our team is going from solidly mediocre to, we were top five, we were top five.
There were a lot of first place teams halfway through, and then the questions got tougher. And they started to get separated.
We're in the top twenty-one now, so.
Congratulations.
I think Blaine might know who's team one.
We only missed two questions on our team, you were awesome. Thank you.
Any other department heads want to come up and tell us what's going on?
Mayor Crowley?
Yes.
Hi, this is Terry Charture with the Ottawa Library.
Hello, Terry.
We've had a really successful Old Town Reads with our binding Dorothy book, which is. Part of the Wizard of Oz information and history. And I just wanted to let everybody know that KOFO has a trivia night coming up this Wednesday night at Primetime Grill. And it starts at seven PM and they are doing it on the Wizard of Oz theme. So I encourage everybody to go out there and test their knowledge on the Wizard of Oz and compete for a fifty dollar primetime grill card.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Look at Dennis, see what's happening?
I just couldn't hold back. The Sea Clip Project has started on sixty-eight highway, you may have seen that sixty-eight through Main Street to the to the bridge is blocked off. They will continue to have it blocked off for a period of time here, as we get some patching, some some. Redo of of the highway across there, so everybody pay attention, it is a work zone and let's not give away her. Being in a hurry, so. That's one of probably several that'll get going here before too long, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
All right.
Dennis, is there estimated completion date on that? I forgot how many days they've.
You know, I I think they were around thirty days on that one. And if the weather holds, they could probably do better than that, you know, this is not a complete restoration, this is a, you know, patching. Okay. Patching job, so they'll be cutting out specific places and then replacing, so needs it good.
Hello, um, January and February was a really. Quite busy month for Ottawa Main Street Association, we have kicked off a couple of different stuff. Pretty much the last time, I don't think that I talked about this, but we are going to keep up with the. Week or monthly giveaways, so I don't know if anybody has seen, but I'm really pushing this hashtag. For businesses to use as well as community members to use to better show off all the things that we have on Main Street. I can't tell you how many businesses I go into still, and I'm like, I had no idea that you that you offered that or that you provided this service. And so that hashtag is to better showcase all of the things that we have on Main Street. And so each month, there is a different giveaway that whoever wins that giveaway. Once, once you post a photo with the hashtag, you're entered automatically into the giveaway. And so then we choose the winner and there's a different giveaway for each month. So that has been super fun. There is about, I think, sixteen businesses participating in the roundup to make a change. I actually had to go back and get more jars to decorate, so that's a good problem that more businesses wanted to participate. And then as well as we've officially started working on the plants on Main Street. So we got a couple of our orders in as well as later on this week. About twenty OU students will help us plant the seeds in the OU greenhouse. And then they will take care of them, water them up, get them nice and strong, and then on April twenty-second. It is also Earth Day, we will have community members that have volunteered to take care of the corners. Along with OU volunteer, OU student volunteers, and we're going to spring up Main Street and get it all good looking on Earth Day. So that's something that we also have been working on, as well as the OU Marketing Club. Has now made a couple of graphics for businesses on Main Street, I'm super excited about how that, how well that's going. It's the the feedback that I've heard from the four businesses that are getting graphics and promotional materials, they really like it. I haven't had to make any adjustments and that was my fear, was that I was going to be the one that had to remake all these graphics. But this, everyone is, everyone is. Done it and done it well, so it was a really busy month, but. It was, it was all good, so we got everything done and and everything that I wanted to.
Hey, and I appreciated what you started the last couple of months about being the only one to come up here, now you see what's happening. Yes, you are, I appreciated that. Any other department heads? All right, as I say every month, there's a lot of valuable information in here, I believe ninety-four pages. So if you want some good reading information, it's all in here. I appreciate all the department heads, what you guys have done, the information you have gathered for us, and certainly the staff that helped you do that, so thank you all, we we certainly appreciate it. That'll move us on to item two, which is a request to rezone property at six thirty-four North King Street. From an I-two heavy industrial to a mixed-use residential commercial, Director Landis. Jenna, how are you?
Jenna, are you? Thank you, I think that Jenna's going to handle both of these and I'm just here for moral support. And Matt, I think we're starting on slide six. Okay, so this is for nine sixteen South Walnut, a conditional use permit, he's requesting to.
We'll skip him.
I'm sorry.
I had one more.
Yeah.
There might be one more, there you go.
There you go.
Six thirty-four North King.
Okay, sorry, it was.
We'll do this one, yeah, this was our.
Okay.
Item two.
All right. So item two, six thirty-four North King rezone, so he is requesting to have this rezoned from I-two heavy industrial. The mixed use wants to restore this historic building, it was built in nineteen nineteen eleven. It was formerly the Warner Fence Company Building. As it's currently zoned, they would not be able to do residential in that area, he'd like to restore that that. The large brick portion to residential and continue to use the rest of it as storage. And this is a. I need a clicker or something. Which direction it's going here? Okay, thank you, so this is the current zoning, we have heavy industrial on the on the west side, and there's a good mix of things there on the east. This is not out of, not out of place really for the range of things that are going on here. And the mixed use is a really good reuse of. An industrial building that's no longer going to be able to serve its purpose. Having residential there blends in with that neighborhood and also you'll have more eyes on the street. If you've got somebody that's that's in there and cleaning it up, so.
Is it spot where they're in circle?
It is, I'm sorry, we're coming out of order, this is where it is located, we're going to do this backwards. Instead of the corner of Massasoit and North King Street.
Is this eligible for the neighborhood revitalization?
He has not applied for that, no. And I honestly don't know if that's, it's in that zone or not.
Think King, at least, I don't know, the full side of King.
I can't remember what the boundaries are on that. So that's, that is what I have covered. You want to do that part? Okay, so this, this to go to the planning commission, and they did voted four to one for approval of this item. And so it does require to come to the city commission so that you guys can consider it, and then there's an ordinance that needs to be passed. Or at least you need to consider to actually pass the rezoning of this area. So in your packet, you do have a draft ordinance. It would be our recommendation that you consider this at your next regular meeting. But if you do have questions and you need us to go back and do any further research, we can certainly do that as well.
Just for, for the public's sake, just like always, you sent out letters to surrounding properties and there was no comments from what I read in here from surrounding properties. So. Nobody was concerned about what might actually be happening there.
Great.
Probably better off, as you say, because it's been vacant for a while and there has been.
It is so cool.
A lot bigger than I thought it was.
Commissioners? Are you, you have any other questions? You okay with moving us on to our next agenda, or would you like to look at it again?
Sounds like they're requesting for our next meeting.
All right, next meeting, yeah.
Well, if you, your regular meeting would be Wednesday, March first, so if you'd like to move it on to that.
And and yeah, like, I mean, I know we've had this discussion before, so if the commission's okay with moving it on, that's fine, if not, we can certainly.
Yeah.
Hold off, I don't think it'd be a concern if we did, but it sounds to me like we're okay, then we'll we'll move it on to our bedroom first agenda.
We knew what you meant.
We'll get there. Uh, let's move on to item three. That's the ordinance granting conditional use permit for a property at nine sixteen South Walnut.
Yes. And we do have Mr. Love here with us, who's the developer of this property, he's requesting that we. A conditional use for. This, to build a duplex and an R-one residential area, the lot is currently vacant. And it is consistent with the the use in in that area, there are other. Duplexes within this neighborhood. This is the proposed building. He has a garage that's protruding forward, so setbacks are a little bit further than. A traditional house, it has a twenty-five foot setback, all it, it needs all the setbacks that are required in this, in this area. And we did have one public comment, concerns about stormwater, and Mr. Love was able to address those comments during, concerns during. Planning Commission.
That water going certain direction from the house, that was an issue.
She was concerned of the, she has pools of water that, some flooding in her area before. So she was concerned that having a house there would contribute to that.
Good.
And like the previous item, you have a draft ordinance in your packet, and this did, was considered by the planning commission, they did vote five to zero to. An approval and to approve this to come before you, so if you have questions, we're happy to answer. And otherwise, we would ask that you consider this at your next regular meeting as well.
Commissioners, any other questions? You want to move this one on to our.
Yeah.
Our first agenda? We'll do that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Love, thank you, we appreciate your investment in our community. More investments. So thank you.
Got more to come.
Great, we appreciate it.
No, good.
All right, that'll move us, move us on to item four, which is an appointment of the record in Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, KMEA Board. Dennis, hello again.
Good afternoon. So really what this is about is. Typically, in the past, we have three representatives on the the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency Board. The first representative has in the past been a commissioner. The second representative for the last. Ten years or so has been myself. And then there's a third permanent position, which we have placed Jeff Olson in. In that position, and like I said, that one typically just does not move. And is a kind of a backup to the other two positions at that point in time. Commissioner Kayler, for the last several years, has served on the KMEA Board and. I have not heard, but I think that is a discussion that you all would have as to. Who you would like to serve on the the KME Board moving forward. This appointment is is up at this point in time, and so we need to do a reappointment or a new appointment.
Would you like to be reappointed?
Is that an option? Yes, that would be fine.
That's what I was gonna, that's the question I was gonna ask. Taylor, if you're, if you're willing to be on the board again.
I've really enjoyed it.
Okay, you made a good appointment, I'd be disappointed, so.
So Dennis, I don't know this after all these years. The permanent appointment on there, is the verbiage ours, or is that KMEA?
The permanent appointment on there is the verbiage ours or is that K M E A? That's K M E As. That's not our verbiage. No. But it doesn't really be permanent as permanent. We can change that at any given point in time. That is our appointment and we can change that appointment. Commissioner Kayler has done a great job. She's attended meetings and and been a big part of K M E A for a long time. She knows her stuff. Yeah, she she knows all of the people. So if I were to recommend someone, that would probably be it.
And at this point, we're just appointing Commissioner Kayler again because you're still for another.
Yeah, my appointment is not up until twenty fourth.
I would assume, do we need to make a motion on that?
Oh, you could approve it on. I mean, she served.
It's not until.
Excitement wise, can you wait?
She does a serve.
I think we all do that.
All right. So we, you will push that one then to the Wednesday meeting.
We will.
Good presentation.
Thank you. All right, move us on to comments by our city manager.
All right, the first one is realer melodies. Um, if you'll remember a couple of years ago when we had Spark funds, we actually used it to help our um, customers that needed help to be made whole with utility bills and that is what this request would do also with some ARPA funds, so.
Thank you. So when we first started talking about what we were gonna use our ARPA funds for, our recommendation to you was not to duplicate funding that was on there by other agencies for the same purpose at the same time. And the Cura program was put in place and ran its course and is now out of funding. And we have a few customers that got caught in the at the very end of the program or towards the end of the program where in a utility situation, um, when they were asking for assistance for utilities, you had to have a delinquent utility account. But while you're waiting on funding to come through, your utility account continued to grow. Your balances continued to grow because of, you know, that's how you you had to have a delinquent account to be awarded the funding. Um, so we have a few customers, I I think it's less than eight. It might actually only be five. Um, that have outstanding balances that have become something that would be really difficult to be able to catch up on. Um, and that what we're asking for is some funding to be able to bring their accounts, uh, to, um, a current status as of the end of December and then give them and and the ability to get started you know, at the top of the year instead of being so far behind. Um, in some of these situations, we would probably, it'd probably take a year to catch up at least. Um, if even just by tacking on a little bit to every bill, just to get caught up and and stay on top of their current bills. So really, we're asking that we put together, um, or that we move some ARPA funding over to these delinquent utility accounts in the amount of about forty eight hundred dollars, forty eight seventy two. Um, and so we wanted to bring it to you as an ask to, or as a recommendation, I guess, to be able to attribute those funds to utility bills. We don't necessarily have any other situations where this might where we might need those funds for delinquent utility bills. This is just one of those situations that at the end of that programming, this was kind of a fallout piece of that. So, um, we brought it to uh, Richard's attention that this might be a good use of those funds since we had initially talked about using them for utility purposes. This would be our ask.
Do you know how many, uh, accounts that the other fund possibly held?
That the other.
The one.
Yeah, we raised, on behalf of our customers, we received a hundred and eight thousand three hundred and twenty nine dollars from the Cura. Just for utility. And they actually, their program closed, they gave up two hundred and ninety million dollars in rental and utility assistance in the state.
So I support this. I thought it helped. It it legitimately helps fill a gap that some of our customers got caught in with funds running out of this one program. And I think it's an appropriate use of the ARPA funds also. So if you have no objection and you wanted to look at that by consensus, we would go ahead and do it.
Commissioners?
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't necessarily have an issue with. I just I don't like it when things are brought to us at the very last and we don't have anything to read up about or know anything about it. So it just gives me heartache. And I know that individuals around this table have heard me say, it just it feels yucky to me when I don't have some kind of data except for just a line.
Well, I'll take the responsibility for that, but there was a memo on it which I didn't send out because I wanted to talk to you about it first, but no, I did prepare a memo.
Is this a timeline needs to be decided on? We have to wait till the next meeting.
No, we we tell these customers, um, in a non disconnect status, um, and are working with them to keep their current bills current. We just haven't been able to address the delinquent outstanding portion with them. So we could, um, we could submit to you what I've submitted already in the next packet. You could consider it that if you'd like.
I think that'd be more, I think that's fair. I, you know, just have some information. If they're not if they're not gonna be disconnected, as you say, I think that's that's fair for us to have a little bit more information to review.
Sure. No problem. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, the next one, I'm sitting in my office at one time. The city had an engineering department. In fact, there's a picture in the commission room with a, uh, which thanks to Laura got put up in the commission room of some old pictures of the city. And one of them is in front of, uh, the old city hall. A city truck that says city engineer. So we, we've had this equipment, surveying instrument, um, surveying sticks. And I talked to Diana at, um, the old depot museum sometime back. And she would be thrilled to get these if you would agree to donate those to her. And I'm sure she will put together a display at some point.
Old equipment is antiquated. It's not useful to us anymore.
Well, we don't have, we we hire, we we don't have a city engineer anymore. We hire that out and the equipment is sixty two years old, so it's not high tech like what it is today.
Doesn't mean it's outdated. Doesn't mean it's outdated.
So I actually rescued it for so years ago.
Which I think is a better use competitive the whole depot museum and sell it on her way to make. Nothing.
Well, I think that that was where it was destined. And I thought it needed a better place to be displayed than.
I think the, uh, Frank goes, uh, down at the old depot museums, the place where it should be. For sure.
It means official on that.
Yeah, I will. I'll just put it on your agenda for March first and we'll prove it.
All right, then you'll remember. Did we bring that?
Commissioners, you'll recall that you were approached by, uh, staff was approached by Steve Hasty. Um, owner of Hasty Awards about purchasing, uh, some land in the north industrial park that is immediately north of his building. Um, the city manager, uh, conducted negotiations with Mr. Hasty and came to a price uh, a little over twenty four thousand dollars for that land was twenty four thousand one hundred and twenty. Um, and he accepted that price. His company, Big Bear Enterprises LLC, would be the actual purchaser of the land. Um, and so, um, we're set to close on that transaction this week. Um, would like to have a motion, uh, from the commission today, uh, authorizing the mayor to sign off on the closing documents and conclude the sale of that land. We do have a signed contract from Mr. Hasty uh, on behalf of his company. And the title work has all been conducted, uh, once that contract was signed and everything looks good and ready to go. So just ask for a motion to confirm that sale and allow for mayor to execute any necessary documents.
I'm willing to make that motion. I just want clarification. When that, um, land is is sold, where does the profits from or the the proceeds from that sale, where do those?
It goes into our Economic Development Fund.
I'll second that motion. And we've been talking about this before. It's not like it's for prime life. And just one more point in case a lot of people are watching this, but a lot of this land is in the flood plain, isn't it? About half the land was a half flood plain.
But most eighty three percent.
That sounds pretty.
Most of this lot is flooded.
Okay, so I just love it. So that in case you wondered why we're selling it. Maybe cheaper than we would normally.
Yes.
That's a big reason why. Plus, H D Ward's been there for many years. So we would appreciate the fact that we've got a good business employer here for many people and a good, uh, community partner.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Questions carries. Thank you. Anything else? Comments by city commissioners, Commissioner Graves?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Kay. Commissioner Clayton?
Uh, mine might only be if we, the five of us are gonna zoom into the, uh, the Kofo Wizard of Oz trivia. Seven o'clock is the same time as our meeting. We could might be able to like take home.
Make that work.
Right. Yeah. That's it. And I'll just say briefly how much I appreciate working with everybody around this table. We have a candidate from a community that had the opportunity to see some of their commission meetings some recently. And just the, I don't know, betrayal, the animosity they seem to have toward one another. It just was just startling to see that. So I just want to say thank you for the respect. We trust each other for one another. You always agree, we disagree agreeably. And I think that's kind of a, a real plus for all of us to have. So I appreciate everybody.
Thank you. Um, I have two things. One, commissioners, we're getting ready to start up on budget season. I know this isn't something we've done before, but how does the, how does the commission think about after next Monday's meeting, sticking around for a budget retreat? Um, for it'd be ten minutes, could be an hour. Um, I just think that we could have some discussion of what we think we want to see in this year's budget. If we have any, uh, questions for our finance director or anybody else that might be, we might want there on, uh, uh, some of the questions prior to, you know, getting into budget. I think sometimes we just get too involved in it and some of that stuff gets pushed to the side and we don't ask the questions that, uh, we probably need to. And it will give our finance department, you know, some, some, uh, uh, guidance on where where we want our budget to end. So.
I wonder if, um, I I love the idea. Um, I just wonder, considering the heavy load that we have this particular week, if just starting out and doing that on Monday, if that may not be too soon.
So and and I'm okay with that. I'm just, I'm reaching out. I think it's, uh, uh, I sooner the better, just because, you know, they're already involved in it. Um, we could certainly I can give the calendar. Thirteenth, we could do it also then if you, if you would prefer. Like I said, I mean, it's, it's, it's all judged.
Let's see, it's a large.
Beware. I I, like I said, I, there's no timeframe on this. I know our retreat with John, as we've done with the, the, the reorganization, uh, has lasted significantly longer. And this one, this one could be a twenty minute retreat. It could be a two hour retreat, just depending on how in depth we really want to get. But I think it'd be good for, for guidance wise. So. Are we okay with the thirteenth, maybe after our, our, uh, study session then?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do that.
It's the most wonderful time of the year.
For sure. I have no other comments except for I'm making a motion to go into executive session for twenty five minutes. Uh, for attorney client privileges to engage in confidential discussion. It will be playing whose legal counsel. Finance director, city manager. We'll give a couple of minutes to leave and we will reconvene in here at, uh, let's say five thirteen. That gives you three minutes to get out.